I call the September 13th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Ms. Penneyard, will you call roll?
Chair Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Catherine Neal. Andrew Carr.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to administrative matters, consideration of the July 12th, 2023 minutes. And those July 12th, 2023 Planning Commission minutes being considered were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? All right, hearing none, the minutes are approved as distributed. All right, next up is the public hearing.
Do we just want to note for the record that there's no citizen input?
Oh, yes, I did skip man, skipped right past it. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I have nobody on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We will bypass that next item. All right, matters before the Planning Commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi judicial hearings conducted by the city's Development Review Board. The Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the Planning Commission. If you wish to testify tonight, you need to complete a testimony card. For those who are here in person, please complete a testimony card located at the side of the room and hand it to the recorder. For members of the public participating remotely with Zoom, with the Zoom meeting function, digital testimony cards are already filed with the recorder, but we ask that you please indicate now or after the presentation that there's a desire to testify by sending a message to the recorder at City Hall using the Zoom chat function. For those people joining the meeting by phone only, you will be unmuted after the staff presentation and asked one at a time if you wish to testify. If you have not previously submitted a digital testimony card, please request one now using the Zoom chat function. Please note that testimony may also be submitted by email during the hearing by emailing the following email address, planning@ci.wilsonville.or.us. Then please confirm with the recorder through the Zoom chat option that you emailed your comments. Your email will then be read into the record. Remain in the meeting until the comments are received and read aloud. Written comment or testimony received after the public hearing has closed cannot be considered. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address at the beginning of your comments, or if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted and make your statement. When your name is called to testify, if you are president, council chambers, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone for the record. If you are participating in the meeting remotely using the Zoom, phone, or web platform, please wait to be unmuted by the recorder before stating your name and comments for the record. Okay, we are discussing Resolution Number LP 23-0002, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission recommending the Wilsonville City Council amend the text of the Development Code to clarify review processes and correct inconsistencies. I declare the public hearing open at 6:05 PM. Will staff please present the staff report?
All right, good evening Chair Heberlein and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kimberly Rybald, Senior Planner with the city, and I will be presenting for you tonight the Development Code process clarifications. We had this item before you at a work session back in July, so the bulk of what you are about to see is substantially similar. There have been since that work session, we also did a work session with the city council to present this item to them and made a couple final clarifications that we had outstanding back in July, as well as a couple of other minor additions, which I will note as part of this presentation. All right, so just as a quick overview of the intent of this project, our key goals are really just updating some inconsistencies and clarifying some processes that we have in the Development Code, namely just making additional certainty where we have some inconsistencies or some outdated references. These changes are generally procedural in nature. We have not really made any substantive changes to policy in this update. It's really trying to make sure that for a few certain application types, that it is clear what the application process is, and there are a couple of additional changes that I will note in these slides. The first topic that we address is related to wireless communications facilities. These code requirements are generally found in Section 4.800 of the Development Code through 4.814. The key issues that we had in this section related to certain co-locations of wireless facilities that are subject to some federal regulations, generally the shorthand for that is 6409A application types. There are requirements from federal regulations that govern how much time we as a city have to review these and also really govern that if a certain amount of standards are met for these applications, that a city must approve them. So how this is currently written in the code, these are processed as a Class 2, but because of the nature and limitations in time that we have to review these, as well as the lack of discretion that we really have in reviewing them, this is not time-wise really the most appropriate process to put these applications through. Likewise, the way that the code is currently organized in this section has a number of application requirements that cover a wide variety of different wireless communications facilities, but a lot of these application requirements are not applicable to some of the requests that we see most commonly, notably the 6409A application types, as well as other facilities that are called small wireless facilities. So to resolve these issues that we've seen, we would propose in this update to change the 6409A co-location review process to a Class 1 review that better aligns the review timelines that we are limited to under the federal regulations. We are adding some additional clarity around the types of uses that are permitted versus those that require a conditional use process, and we're reorganizing these application requirements so that it's a little clearer to readers of the code which requirements apply to co-locations that are 6409A versus the small wireless facilities or SWIFTs, as opposed to things that are new wireless communications facilities. And the application requirements for those will remain the same. Really, this is intended to just make it easier to understand for the co-locations and the small wireless facilities that a lot of those things don't apply, and it just makes it more clear cut. The next topic that this update addresses is related to the extension of development approvals from the DRB and anything administrative as well. One of the issues we had is that there were some code updates back in the late aughts that ended up creating some conflicts between processes outlined in Section 4.023 and Section 4.140. So what we're left with is a lack of clarity as to what the review process is, as well as some outdated language in Section 4.023 that makes references to things happening in 2009 and 2010. And so we really just want to add some clarity around this and make it consistent, so we would clarify here that these extensions are approved by the Planning Director via a Class 1 administrative review. One change here from the work session in July is that we looked a little more closely at the application period. I think we had 30 days in there last time because the code says currently right now either eight days or 30 days. We thought about it some more and we didn't want to create a period in which if an applicant somehow missed this, but they still had a valid approval, that there was no way to rectify that. And so instead, we've just made it so that it's one day or prior to that expiration. It gives staff the ability to still have time, the way the language is written, to process that application without expiration, and then once that application is processed, then the extension is valid. And so again, our hope here is just to more clearly codify what the process currently is and not change it. Next topic relates to temporary uses and signs, and there's just again some inconsistency here for criteria applying to Class 1 versus Class 2. Really, they're the same type of permit, the only difference in those different classes of review is the duration of the permit. So cleaning up those approval criteria, adding clarity to how we calculate the days so that it's clear that if you apply for 30 days, that those don't necessarily have to be consecutive as long as they're in the same calendar year. And we are additionally adding some clarity about temporary signs in that section of the code that indeed they do still require a permit even though they are temporary. And we've struck some language in that section that actually has temporary sign permit criteria because we really just want to have the sign code be the home of those criteria so that we can avoid any inconsistencies potentially in the future if those standards would change. And the last topic relates to applications and adding clarity around when an application or an appeal is considered filed and what needs to be included with that. So in both Sections 4.011 and 4.022, we noticed a lack of clarity here, so we are just adding language that would clarify what is needed to be considered filed, and this again is consistent with our current practice. So with that, the proposed Development Code amendments are included within your packet as an attachment to the resolution. The staff recommendation is that you adopt Resolution Number LP 23-0002, which would recommend the adoption of these proposed Development Code amendments to City Council. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposed amendments. Thank you.
Nothing here. Go for it.
Thanks, thanks for sharing this, and I missed the last July workshop. But yeah, reading through, I think this all makes sense, some supportive of like adding the clarity and just making sure we're following the federal regulations, so I appreciate that. I was wondering, and maybe I missed this in the packet, but I think the slides referenced just outdated language. What does that, what does that refer to?
So if you go into the Attachment 1 under Section 4.023, I believe this is page 2 of 21 in the attachment to this item. Yeah, subsection 05 has some language for a period beginning June 1st, 2009 and ending June 1st, 2010 that required staff to approve extensions and that they didn't count against the amount of extensions you can get, and this was put in there in light of the fact that the economic crash of the time had an impact on the ability of development to move forward then.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
One question on permit expiration. When does it expire? Does it expire the 12/01, the day of the permit, or 11/59 at the end of the day?
That is a good question. I think historically when we've had the date of the expiration, that would be 11/59 at the end of the day.
Okay, so at this point, the expectation is that the applicant provide in writing one day before, so the day before, as long as it's any time during that day, it's okay. But if they gave it the day of the expiration, it would not be, even if they submitted it first thing in the morning.
Right, and I think the intent behind that really does get to not wanting to get into questions of time, and we do at least want to verify all those things related to the application being filed. That one day gives us the ability, let's say it comes in at like 5:05 PM, the office is closed, and you know, we can verify that something is missing if it is before processing. And so we're just trying to allow one day.
Okay, so the expectation is if that comes in, you guys are doing a, an immediate review to make sure it's complete so that it doesn't.
Right.
Fall out of that timeline.
And there's language in there as well that, you know, if for some reason we don't issue the decision that day, that would keep it from expiring until that decision is processed.
Okay.
Okay, general question about, because I'm just hearing about like conflicting, you know, what we approve in code might conflict with old pieces of it, so I guess what step in the process do we go back and like review the old stuff to make sure we don't keep getting in the same, like is that a point in the process when we develop this?
That is a great question. This update, to a degree, is an attempt to do that. You know, that being said, there's always things I think that come up. We, you know, we notice it when we adopt new code as well. We do have the ability to have these processes where we can come in and do these clarifications. I think historically the city has done them as well. Do you think it's been some time? Oftentimes, if we have a larger code update that we're doing for projects, you know, we have the ability to do that when that's open as well. And sometimes, you know, it's a matter of trying to figure out, is it really a Scrivener's error versus is it something that is just needing to be updated in code? So if it's a Scrivener's error, we can make that change without having to go through a hearing process, but I think we are trying to be mindful of these things and we'll try to do it more often as we see things that we just, we knew there were a couple of outstanding issues this time around that we wanted to get fixed, and then we tried our, you know, made a best effort to do a pass of the code now. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, now we get to call for public testimony. All members of the public on the call will be unmuted if they wish to testify. If you wish to testify, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you. If you emailed comment, please state that for the record and staff will read those comments into the record.
I currently have no attendees on Zoom.
All right, so is there anyone on the commission that feels that we need to continue the public hearing to a future unspecified date? All right, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed at 6:19 PM. Any further discussion by the commission? Okay.
Nope.
Nope. Okay, well, then I guess we're ready for a motion, if anybody wants to give one.
I move that we approve for the recommendation, Resolution Number LP 23-0002, to move it forward to City Council.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any amendments? Seeing none? All right, let's see, we should probably vote then, huh? Ms. Penneyard, you want to do a roll call vote?
Andrew Carr.
Yes.
Nicole Hendricks.
Yes.
Jennifer Willard.
Yes.
Cameron Mesba.
Yes.
Chair Heberlein.
Yes.
That's everybody? Okay, sorry, thank you.
All right, that's page two.
Passes unanimously.
Yes, passes unanimously. All right, I think we're good on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, work session on Coffee Creek Assessment.
As Cindy is loading this, I'll go ahead and say a few words. Is my microphone on? Okay, great. Thanks Chair Heberlein, members of the commission. This is an exciting topic for us to be working on, as many of you, some of you, were here when the city adopted our form-based code for the Coffee Creek industrial area. Others were not and are much newer to this discussion item, so Cindy will provide a little bit of background on this item. But one of the things it did was it essentially wanted us to revisit it after five years or after a number of applications, and so that is the crux of this work. And I will note on a related item that Cindy won't be covering this evening, but we have received grant funding and are seeking additional grant funding to do additional work for our Basalt Creek planning area. As many of you know, we adopted the concept plan, we still have a few items that we need to adopt to actually get to full master planning level and zoning code amendments. And with that, we will be considering whether or not to apply the form-based code within the Basalt Creek planning area. That was one of the things the commission and the council wanted to have in the concept plan and have staff consider moving forward. So this work is really critical, both in revisiting what we adopted five years ago, but also potentially in a new work program item that will be coming in front of you next year, the Basalt Creek implementation work. And so with that, we'll be looking at the Coffee Creek form-based code and seeing what we may or may want, may or may want. Thank you. Apply moving forward in Basalt Creek. So with that, I just want you to have a little bit of that background before Cindy gave her presentation, and with that, I will hand it over to her. Thank you.
Andy, I might need a little bit of assistance with figuring out how to share here. Do I? Sorry. Do I need to go out of here?
Yeah.
Yeah, just escape. All right.
So is Coffee Creek the first form-based code area of the city we did?
That is correct. The city doesn't have any other form-based code districts, and also to the best of our knowledge, this is the only, or it was the first example of an industrial form-based code. So we often see form-based codes in urban areas where use is less important than form, where we really want to drive a pedestrian orientation. But the, we originally had an overlay district in Coffee Creek, it was actually a long day road, and some of that code was maybe not in line with exactly what we wanted to do, so we were looking back at the overlay district and then went the route of a form-based code. And really, it was to reflect that we wanted certain design standards in Coffee Creek, but also that it needed to still support a multimodal system and have the human design element. So to our knowledge, it was the first. I don't know at this point whether it still remains the only one or not.
All right. Good evening Chair Heberlein and Commissioners, my name is Cindy Luxhoy, Associate Planner, and I must say I'm very excited to be here tonight. I've been with the city for four and a half years, and this is the first time I've been able to present to Planning Commission, so it's an exciting evening. As Miranda said, I am here tonight to provide Planning Commission with an update on the Coffee Creek Code Assessment Project and to seek input on direction of possible Development Code amendments to the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District. The Coffee Creek Master Plan is located in northwest Wilsonville, west of I-5, and it's shaded blue on the map on this slide. The city adopted the master plan in 2007 for this area, creating a detailed transportation and land use plan, consistent with the concept plan that was completed in 1998. The area includes roughly 216 gross acres and is primarily located in Washington County with a small triangle south of Southwest Clutter Road located in Clackamas County. It's designated industrial in the comprehensive plan, and when land in the area is annexed to the city, it is zoned planned development industrial, regionally significant industrial area. In 2013, the city began developing the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District Form-Based Code and accompanying pattern book with the goal of creating a regulatory framework for industrial development in Coffee Creek within the underlying PDI-RSIA zone. within the underlying PDI-RSIA zone that simplified and provided more certainty with respect to the approval process for new projects. In 2018, the Form-Based Code and Pattern Book were adopted, establishing clear and objective regulations to guide street design and connectivity, site design, circulation, building form and architecture, and landscaping for future development. Procedures governing City Council review of annexations and zone map amendments in Coffee Creek also were modified. This allowed City Council review of these requests before, without prior review or recommendation by Development Review Board, thus facilitating concurrent processing with other related development permit applications for a project. And also to facilitate a predictable and timely process for reviewing industrial development applications, two land use tracts for review were established. And those included Class II Administrative Review and Development Review Board Review. And I'll give a little bit more detail about that in the next slide. Figure CC-1 of the Form-Based Code shown in this slide is the Regulating Plan, which identifies the street types and boundaries of the Design Overlay District. Addressing streets indicated with a solid orange line are existing and planned streets within the Regulating Plan area. And required supporting streets are shown as dotted lines, and there are planned intersections along Garden Acres Road and Day Road that are circled on the Regulating Plan. Tables CC-1 through CC-5 of the Design Overlay District include the development standards for the Coffee Creek area. And these address street design and connectivity, district-wide planning and landscaping, site design, building design, and waysides. The Pattern Book includes design guidelines and prototypes to illustrate the principles that inform the Design Overlay District. And for those projects where the clear and objective standards of the Form-Based Code do not provide sufficient flexibility to address specific issues for site design or landscape design or building design, the Pattern Book provides guidance to the applicant and the Development Review Board. When a development application is able to meet all the clear and objective standards of the Form-Based Code, the project can be approved by the Planning Director through a Class II Administrative Review. But when an application is not able to comply and requests one or more waivers to the clear and objective standards, the project must comply with some or all of the design guidelines in the Pattern Book and is reviewed and may be approved by the Development Review Board. When the Form-Based Code standards were adopted in 2018, the process was subject to a pilot period of three completed development applications or five years, whichever came first. And as of 2023, both of these milestones have been achieved. And we have four completed development applications, and it has been five years. So we have started on the Coffee Creek Assessment. And this review will enable the city to determine warranted adjustments to achieve the overall objective of providing a clear and quick development review process that fosters creation of the desired Connected High-Quality Employment Center in Coffee Creek. Metrics to be tracked during the pilot period included at least the following, which was the time to approval, the number and type of requested waivers, the quantity of testimony at public hearings or via other means, a survey of applicants upon conclusion of the review process to gain feedback from a customer experience standpoint, and survey of nearby citizens to understand any questions or concerns about the administrative review process. So to date, staff has reviewed the timeline to land use approval and requested waivers to the Form-Based Code standard for the four completed projects. We've also conducted focused discussions with applicants and consultants. And because there has been no public testimony from anyone other than applicants for the development projects, and none of the projects has followed the Class II Administrative Review process, we have not interviewed any nearby citizens as they haven't expressed any concerns or questions. With respect to timeline for the four completed development projects, the length of time from complete application to final land use approval has varied from roughly three to seven months. Each application applied for at least one waiver, which triggered review by the Development Review Board, and thus the Class II review process has not been utilized. Waivers requested have been for driveway width on a supporting street, parking location and use at the front of a building, on an addressing street, retaining wall height and design, and building entrance canopy and ground floor ceiling height, among other requests. In focused discussions, applicants' comments about the development review process in Coffee Creek were mostly positive. The ability to take an application to City Council, public hearing for annexation and zone map amendment prior to DRB review was greatly appreciated and added appreciable time savings to the process. And based on the assessment, the review process is overall working as it was designed to facilitate predictable and timely review of industrial development applications. However, applicants suggested that adjustments to some of the Form-Based Code standards, particularly related to project waiver requests, could improve and streamline the development review process. And I wanted to provide a couple of examples of the type of modifications that we might be considering. For example, there's a possible adjustment to the parcel driveway width on a supporting street. So the current standard is a minimum width of 24 feet with a 10% adjustment allowing a width of up to 26.4 feet. And in focused discussions, the applicants indicated that the minimum driveway width for access to the passenger vehicle parking portion of the site off of the supporting street is not an issue. 24 feet is sufficient for that. However, the driveway for truck loading and unloading area access needs to be wider to accommodate the truck turning movements from a supporting street. And the maximum width that they are suggesting is between 40 to 45 feet, depending on what the angle of approach is from the supporting street into the project. Another one is related to parking location, design, and extent on an addressing street. And the current standard allows one double-loaded bay with a maximum of 16 spaces and an allowed adjustment to a maximum of 20 spaces on the addressing street. Those spaces also have to be designated for short-term, one-hour-or-less visitor and disabled parking only between the right-of-way and the addressing street and the building. And in the discussions, the applicants indicated that one double-loaded bay with up to 20 spaces is really challenging for them to achieve, particularly for large speculative industrial buildings. And in addition, not allowing any of the parking spaces to be used for employees is very limiting. And they suggested that allowing variation in the number, the loading or location of the parking bays, increasing the maximum number of allowed spaces, and allowing some or all of the spaces to be used for employee parking were things that could help them not need to request a waiver. And then the third example is about canopy height at the primary building entrance. So the current standard requires a minimum of 15 feet vertical clearance under the canopy with a 10% adjustment, which would allow the canopy to be reduced to 13.5 feet. And in the discussions, the applicants indicated that that minimum canopy height is challenging and that a reduced canopy height of a minimum of 12 feet was suggested as being more consistent with standard storefront dimensions. So staff, based on the assessment thus far, has determined that modification to the land use review tracts and process isn't needed. The review process is working as designed to facilitate review and concurrent City Council review of annexations and zone map amendments, which all four projects requested in particular is enabling a more streamlined land use review process. But because none of the projects has been able to meet all of the Form-Based Code standards and thus utilize the Class II Administrative Review track, we are recommending slight adjustments to the Form-Based Code standards to make compliance more achievable. And that would enable applicants to use the Class II Administrative Review track while not compromising the city's ability to continue to create the Connected and high-quality employment center in Coffee Creek. So feedback from this meeting and from presentation at City Council work session on September 18th will guide staff in drafting a package of proposed development code amendments that will be presented to you for feedback at the December 2023 meeting. And a Planning Commission public hearing and recommendation to City Council on the amendments is expected in February of next year with City Council public hearing and adoption in March or April. So at tonight's meeting, I'm seeking feedback from commission, basically responding to two questions. So do you have questions about the code assessment thus far? And then, do you agree with the direction of possible development code amendments described by staff that maintains the review process and focuses on adjusting the Form-Based Code standards to reduce the need for waiver requests? And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Let's start, I guess, since you're looking at me. So I like what was done with the assessment, the fact that we asked the applicants for their feedback, not only on the process, but on the code itself. I thought, my most common comment as I was writing down is, it's, this is Form-Based Code for an industrial area, and it sounds like it may not have been designed for an industrial area? Because there are obviously limitations for trucking. I noticed the driveway thing right away. There's no way you could turn an 18-wheeler, the 26-foot driveway. So some of those things became apparent. But I do like the process we went through, the feedback that we got from them. And I think it will be useful in making the amendments that might make the process smoother. Yeah, I like what I saw.
Great. And I did, just in follow-up to that, so we had, I had three focused discussions with various applicants. And then I had a follow-up discussion with one of the applicants in particular last week because they had offered to, you know, share their insights with me. And we went, you know, like, design standard by design standard through all of those. And I made detailed notes about that. And it was very helpful. To your point of that some of the standards don't seem to, you know, they may have been, it almost feels in some ways that they were designed for a bit of different development than what we're getting. Yes, yes. And we are getting, you know, larger speculative industrial buildings that have multiple loading bays. And yes, and so it becomes really challenging, you know.
I think the one about parking, you know, there's not, none of these, it doesn't look like any of these were storefront-type developments, right? Which is where the parking kind of, your employees step on your customers' parking if there's not enough, right? But many of these appear to be more industrial distributors, which won't have storefronts.
Yeah, three out of the four. There is one, Precision Countertops, which is a corporate headquarters. So they will have more customers because they have a retail showroom. They have office at the front there. You know, one of the challenges has been for the more speculative buildings is that their office end caps are at the front of the building. And, but their employee parking is required to be at the side or the back. And the back usually ends up being the truck court. So then you end up with conflicts between, you know, employees in the truck court and the security around the back of the building. And so it's, it depends to some extent on what type of development it is. But yeah, there's a desire to have more, allow more of that employee parking at the front so that they can access their place of work rather than going through a building to get to there. Yeah.
It's a follow-up on whether we're getting the development that we thought we were going to get. Part of design standard is to get what you're hoping to get, that you envisioned. And changing the design because you're getting some other use that wants to jimmy your design standards in order to make it possible is not exactly visionary. So my question is, are we starting to see some economic information or use information that indicates what we had envisioned for this light industrial, commercial area not being viable? So that would, to me, say we need to really rethink our design and use. Is that what we're seeing?
So I wasn't here when we adopted the code, you know. And I've, my understanding is that the design or the desired, you know, kind of environment in Coffee Creek was more, as it was envisioned, was more perhaps smaller buildings or multiple buildings on a site. You know, more of the corporate headquarters, perhaps an office building here or there. And whether it's because of market dynamics and what's in most demand right now or some other factor, I really don't know because I'm not a market expert. But what we're seeing is more of the bigger warehousing and distribution-type uses that require, you know, extensive, flat floors that can accommodate, you know, racking and things like that. So I think that what we're going to end up doing is, how do we find that balance between what we're seeing being developed out there and what, you know, is envisioned in the Coffee Creek plan? And how does that mesh with the market right now? What we're seeing now, but also what into the future? And I think that's a question that is to be addressed as we go a little bit farther into this and have conversations about which of these code standards do we want to change? You know, and what are the implications of that? And is that consistent with what we would like to see out there?
If my memory serves, I was on the commission when we were coming up with these. Warehousing was not what we were envisioning. We were talking about gathering places for employees and walk trails and this, that, and the other thing. Like, almost office campus more. But we allowed that it would be like industrial mixed in it. Warehousing, big-box warehousing kind of stuff was not what I remember being the commission's vision. And I understand that commercial, existing commercial land uses are, because big-box commercial is kind of being phased out, there's a lot of empty spaces. But we're not talking But we're not talking big-box commercial either. So I would really hope that we do a more thorough imagining and reimagining of what we want that development to look like, because to me, it was a special opportunity for Wilsonville to develop the kind of 21st century kind of industrial campus that you don't see just anywhere else. I feel like we are perhaps jumping the gun.
Jumping the gun is what I tried to do before you finish your thought there. Good comments, Commissioner Mesba. So a quick story, I remember as an intern with the planning director sitting me out to take pictures of what this area could look like in neighboring jurisdictions. So so this process has been going on for a while. But, you know, a couple of thoughts based on this conversation we've just been having is certainly the market has shifted, right? Terms of this vision of commercial of corporate office is definitely a different market now than it was, as is high-tech office. And warehouse is oftentimes the new commercial with where everything is delivered to your door, things like that. So I mean, there are market forces at play here. The other thing I would note based on this is these design standards, such as, you know, the truck turning and location of parking, the way it was written, we didn't like put standards that disallowed warehousing, it just they had to go through a bit more process. And so it's really not changing the use, it's just creating more process at this point. And certainly, the market seems, at least currently in this, I mean, you see this on 12 Sherwood Road and elsewhere, it's definitely that large warehouse. Also, those buildings are adaptable. I, you know, I think a great example is the former paper plant warehouse church on Beckman Road that's now D.W. Fritz, that's, I mean, that large tilt-up concrete, it has been a building that's shown more than a lot of others adaptive reuse over time. So just a few thoughts. So I don't think, unless we want to like outlaw in the zoning code allowing tilt-up concrete warehousing, that's likely the market telling us we're going to continue to see that out here. And so it's a question, do we put more process to that that doesn't really stop it? Or do we allow it through the Class II review?
I won't ask Dan if he would do the same thing with with high-density or, you know, middle housing, just because market all of a sudden started getting sketchy about it. No, we would stick to it. So I guess what you're saying to me is when we tried to make it difficult, perhaps, as part of the process, to have warehousing all over the place there, we should have thought about saying no warehousing outright?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't make it that difficult, right? It just added maybe a month or two to the process, so.
I guess my question is, should we just give up and make it even more easy? Or should we go the other way and say, no, we don't want warehousing all over this place? You know, we want it to be perhaps a higher use than just warehousing? Or maybe this is the wrong side of the metro area for what we were envisioning, and all you're going to get here is warehousing. I thought that wasn't the case because I'm kind of familiar with that area. It was a blank slate. It wasn't like you were in the middle of a lot of recycled cars and, you know, junkyards and stuff like that that you were trying to change. No, it was a blank slate. So I'm not sure why we would be less insistent.
I would just add a couple of thoughts, Commissioner Mesba and other commissioners, on this topic. The area, the Coffee Creek industrial area is designated regionally significant industrial area by Metro's Title IV. So by its nature, it is more actually like more industrial in nature than other areas would be, where you might see a lot of office in a downtown area or kind of campus office environment. That can occur in an RSI area, but you, RSI-A by its nature is going to allow things like manufacturing, warehousing, distribution. So those uses were always allowed and envisioned for this area. It's a matter of how do they look, right? So this is why we went through a form-based code, was what are the design standards that create a more inviting industrial area that may have manufacturing and industrial uses? So I think a lot of your points are taken that there's, to what extent do we want to dictate that design? And to what extent do we push that through which process? Do we loosen that up or not? But in terms of a use, it's not a use that's ever really been outlawed, and it's still allowed. And so that's why we're seeing those uses locate here, because it's allowable. And it's a question of then, how do those get designed? And how do we make those interface with the other kind of RSI-A expectations and standards for an industrial area? Obviously, an office or a campus that's office and, you know, manufacturing could also locate here, which probably would be able to meet some of these design standards more easily than some of the warehouse distribution types. But the form-based code is still doing things like really dictating the size of the buildings, the length of the frontage. Those were also things that were very important when we went through the form-based code process. We were acknowledging, yeah, we're probably going to see some warehouse out here. Let's make sure it's not a mile long or a half mile long. And we see that in other places. So I just wanted to share some of that, which is that we knew some of those uses were likely to happen here. Maybe we didn't think they'd happen to the extent that they have, that that's the stronger market right now. So it is putting it in there, it is asking for these waivers. Maybe the Commission wants those waivers to still be a part of the process if they are going to be requesting some of those design standards. I think some of them, particularly related to trucking, I think maybe we wrote those a little too stringent to begin with, knowing that trucks are likely going to be coming to all of these spaces, even if it is a campus environment. So I think there's some, I think potentially it might go both ways, and that is the question we're going to want and discussion we're going to want to have with you. But I think we did acknowledge all along that those uses would likely locate here. It's just maybe more than we originally anticipated.
And is it also perhaps that we don't have a large enough population as a sample right now? We only have three, and one of them is kind of going in the direction that we were preferring, perhaps?
Yeah.
And the other two are the other way. So maybe it's an okay mix thus far?
It is quite possible, yeah. This area is highly parcellized, so without any aggregation, we're likely, it's, you know, we'll see what happens. It's hard to know.
Okay.
Well, and also, I would add to that, I think two things that we are seeing is the waysides. Now, every one of them has a wayside, it's very pedestrian-oriented, gives, you know, place for people on bikes or walking through there to, you know, sit and relax. And I think the the design of the buildings, the architecture of the buildings, yes, they're tilt-up, most of them are tilt-up concrete, but we're getting, I mean, on the Black Creek project, that has an insane number of reveals on all sides of that building. It's, it's, you know, the colors are, it's just, it's, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful building. And the the ceiling heights within the the office areas are consistent with the canopy, and there's so much light that comes in. They have skylights. I mean, we don't require that, but we did a tour of of that building, and when we went there, the, there were no lights on inside the building, but there were so many skylights in the roof that it was perfectly lit. And it was just, it was really, it's just really well-done.
That's a good point. I would encourage the Commission, if you have a chance, to go down Garden Acres Road and just see how some of these buildings are building out. Two of them are either complete or near-complete. I don't know if Coffee Creek has TCO or CVO, but it has a really nice, I'd like to commence, Cindy, on her work with the applicant in terms of the trees that were preserved on-site for the Coffee Creek, it's a, for the Black Creek project. It's a very large building for our area and standards. They definitely maximize the footprint on that property. So a lot of trees were removed. However, some very significant trees were preserved on the corner of that parcel, and that's where they created the wayside for residents or for pedestrians who might be walking in the area in the future. And it's a very, very nice space and provides a gorgeous outlook when you're actually in the building and looking out the windows and get to see those those trees and the beautiful landscaping. You know, some of these standards, I think one of the examples was the parking. I would note that that's one in which I think we still want to maintain, like preserving parking on, like not having the whole front, your your frontage just be parking, and you see a great depth of parking, or that's all you can see is the parking, and you don't get to see the beautiful building or the wayside that takes prominence at the corner. I think that's something we do want to keep, but at the same time, could still potentially be modified in a way that it doesn't trigger the Development Review Board review. We've worked very hard with applicants where they have increased the number, for example, to do additional screening, and we hold them to some of our mid-to-high screening standards, requiring additional landscaping. And even though there's an increase, not allowing it to be an indefinite increase, but up to X percent increase is something we could write into the code, which would allow that flexibility potentially for the project to still go through a Class II process instead of DRB, where we might have some wiggle room. So that's an option that the Commission could consider moving forward, is you might still have the original standard, but then have an adjustment that the planning director could make if XYZ other standards were met. Because that's essentially what we're doing when we take it to DRB, is we're working with the applicant to say, okay, well, you're proposing that additional, you still have to meet the intent of the form-based code. To show intent, you have to provide additional screening. Here's how you would do that. So that's something that we could actually write into this code, where it's like a kind of a different process. It's like if you're not going to meet the initial, then you could, to get this extra allowance, you have to do XYZ. And then if they can't meet that, then it might trigger them to go to a waiver process to the DRB if they're looking for an allowance that's a considerable adjustment as opposed to a more modest adjustment. So that's something that, you know, moving forward, as as you think about what's on the table, there's, there's different options and different directions that we could go.
Ms. Chair. I've always been in favor of giving staff the ability to problem solve with the applicant. So that's fine. If we're going that direction, that's fine. At least with this planning director. I mean, I mean, you have to trust who is negotiating on your behalf. Some of the stuff that I'm hearing are very positive, and these are the things we were envisioning. Some of the stuff, I mean, an 18-foot retaining wall against a natural landscape resource, whether it's a pocket wetland or whatever it is, is to me not in line. Because part of it was to meet the existing landscape in a way that embraces it and doesn't turn its back to it. So this is, this is a mixed bag, and I agree, we have a lot of positives that we are seeing as a result of the envisioning and work. I was just alarmed by some of the potential negatives. That retaining wall was one, an ocean of parking in front of a building brings fries to mind, is another one. We've been trying to to get away from that in other parts of the city. This is a brand-new development, that was just, those were what I was catching. I didn't mean to make it sound like we're losing the baby with the bathwater, Cindy. Excellent work, beautiful work to keep the trees, significant trees and all that. It was just some of the other stuff that they're pushing against, I'm saying, yeah, no, that wasn't what we had in mind. Isn't there a way to problem solve to keep the vision? That's where I was going.
Well, thank you for presenting your first Planning Commission presentation. Appreciate it. And I also want to thank the city for having the diligence to come back and follow up with the pilot as planned. So that's, that's hard, takes planning, so good job. And after the discussion and the presentation, I'm directionally aligned with allowing the, reducing the need for waivers with these applications.
Okay. Yeah, great presentation. Welcome to Planning Commission. I also just appreciate, yeah, the follow-through with the applicants and getting feedback and just the update on the pilot, so it's really exciting and good work. I did have a question just about, like, with the waivers varying so much on like different things and this being a pilot, do we anticipate more variety of different, like, requests being, coming in? Like, how do we account for that in in our discussions? Are we just basing it off the examples we've seen, the waivers we've seen come in already? So.
Good question. I think that, well, you know, we don't know what additional, what future applications we're going to get. I think that, just due to the configuration of the properties that aren't developed yet out there, long, skinny, I think the likelihood of us getting, unless unless properties are combined, I don't think that you can build the kind of warehouse distribution-type buildings that are on logistics and Black Creek and even Delta. So, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, really, so we don't know what kinds of waivers, but the the most waivers have been requested by those bigger buildings. Precision Countertops almost got through, almost. They were almost able to do the Class II, except for the driveway width, and they had to do a waiver for that. So, you know, if we get more of those corporate headquarters, smaller buildings, then, you know, likelihood is that they can get really close to getting through the process without without the big waivers. And the the one that had the most waivers, which was seven waivers, was the Black Creek site. And the problem, the the challenge with that was just that it had two addressing streets and a supporting street. It was surrounded on all sides. And so they could not, you know, how do you design a building without needing to get waivers, especially a building of that size? You know, so I think that was a little bit of a unique circumstance. Others had like maybe four, four or five waivers, the other two projects. So does that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm just trying to like, if we go through this process and then it's, we still won't be able to capture, but that's why I appreciate kind of that, this discussion that we've had, and I think it, I'm definitely open and willing to have more discussion about what that could, changes could like or not. So I'm willing to move forward.
One of the thoughts that I had as I've been going through this is, you know, for instance, with the driveway width, right? You know, if you have, I think when it comes, becomes a problem is when you have two driveways coming off of that supporting street. So because for for both Black Creek and for Precision, they were able to meet that 24-foot, 24 to 26-foot at the front on the, you know, when they, the, into the vehicle, passenger vehicle parking areas. That was not a problem. But when there was a second driveway to specifically access that truck court, then they needed a wider, because they could not make that turn from the supporting street. So maybe we make an adjustment to the standard that says, in those instances, you know, that that the the 24-foot with the adjustment stands, but in those instances, when you have a second driveway off of the supporting street that is to the truck area, loading, unloading area, then, you know, you could go with a wider driveway. I mean, I just, just a thought about, you know, how can we adjust it while, to accommodate those instances where that happens? But. those instances where that happens, but in the vast majority of cases, keeping it to that 24-foot width?
I'll ask this from Miranda, because I'm trying to remember what the thinking was with the width limitation. Was it a visual issue or a pedestrian crossing, the wide driveway issue, which was it?
It was primarily pedestrian orientation. So when making those connections, making sure the apron wasn't so wide and unsafe, difficult for pedestrians to cross. I will also admit that, you know, the team, the project team that we had, the consultants that we had were, also did a lot more urban-style development and less suburban-style development. So I think there was also a tendency towards presenting standards that might be fit better in an urban environment, including even in an industrial area in Portland, I don't know. And us seeing those and saying, yeah, that makes sense to try to reduce things, to just, you know, make the connectivity and the pedestrian-oriented nature of this more prevalent than we've seen in other areas. And we may or may not have scrutinized that number to a great degree.
Yeah, the reason why I ask that question is, I could see a solution that says you can have 24-foot pavement and then have two, what is it, eight-foot aprons of lattice concrete pervious pavement with grass. Visually, that would look like lawn. But it could support a semi-truck going over it when it needs to kind of corner and do stuff like that. So I just wasn't sure whether we were looking visually at not having these huge expanses of paved roads coming into the frontage, or was it some functional thing we were thinking about, like stormwater? But even with that, pervious pavement would reduce stormwater, so just a thought.
Cindy, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. It's nice to meet you. I was racking my brain, trying to figure out if you'd been before the commission before, and I didn't think you had, and I was wondering why Miranda didn't introduce you that way, but now I know. I am overall in agreement with the direction and what's been going on so far. I look forward to seeing how this progresses and what the proposals are. One thing that jumped out to me on the parking location side of it, and I was curious, is there a requirement? I noticed that it said short-term, hour or less. Is there a requirement that they post signs that that parking in front of the building is short-term, an hour or less?
I don't believe so.
I don't think they've ever been put up, to my knowledge, or that we've conditioned them.
Okay. Because, and I was hoping that was the case, because, you know, when I go visit a business for work, I tend to be there more than an hour. And so all the visitor spots, I wouldn't expect to have a short-term, one-hour-or-less, you know, time limit to it. You know, I think it's just nature of the beast, that it's not, it's not a long-term parking area. And I think that's the intent of the rule there, is that it's not, you know, we're storing commercial vehicles there for days at a time. So I think that's something to look at. You know, the truck entrance thing, I think, given the low-traffic volumes for most of these places, I would not anticipate that a 40-foot entrance driveway would be unsafe from a pedestrian standpoint. So maybe when we're looking at that, just making sure that we're comfortable with what the traffic loads might be, and that that is indeed the case, that it isn't unsafe. Or maybe we do look at something like Commissioner Mesba identified as a flexible space that allows for the transit with, while still retaining a smaller visual appearance. Yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Informational, looks like we don't have any staff presentations for City Council Minutes or PC Work Program. Anything of note? Any changes to say anything about? All right. Looks like with that, we're ahead of schedule. I guess we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I do have a minor I know. After I shook my head, no.
Heard it.
I'll take just an extra 60 seconds of your time to just give you an informational update. I presented at the DEI Committee last night. As many of you are aware, we just approved the first development application in the Town Center, Wilsonville Town Center, that will build, construct a building and part of a local street, consistent with the Wilsonville Town Center vision and plan. So we're all very excited about that. As part of this, a question came up about street naming. And there was no designation for like a street naming scheme in Town Center, specific or any different than our existing street naming policy. So, city staff has inquired with the DEI Committee. The Town Center plan was such an inclusive project that engaged a lot of the community, we thought an inclusive street naming guide, scheme, and list for the Town Center would be an appropriate avenue to go. So, we presented at the committee last night, we provided some context and information for them. Essentially, we've asked them for direction on a street naming scheme. We will come back to them after they've had an opportunity to brainstorm and discuss amongst themselves and either select one or prioritize one, and then work with them on developing an actual street name list that would accompany that scheme. So I thought many of you were involved in that Town Center planning process and might be interested in that. We hope to have that nailed down by the beginning of the calendar year, in line with when the developer will need that information.
Cool. Great.
Can I ask a question? I know. Sorry, this one, I've been holding on to this one, but I feel like this is the appropriate time. But it is, I'll just like leave a big-picture question, we can talk about it later. So, related to equity, does the city or does the planning department use like an equity analysis in the work that you do, like a standard set of questions that you kind of go through to see like, are we making sure that we're considering any disparities or considering things like, you know, like you just, the example you just gave, is there mapping work that we consider, data that we look into, or is there a set process, I guess?
Great question, Commissioner Hendricks. The city has not established a formal, like questionnaire or assessment that each department or division would go through for each project. We are working with the DEI Committee to look at different project and processes that we have internal to the city, so that is something that may come out of our work with them. It's a question I can pose back to the staff who liaison with that committee as well, on whether that's something they want to discuss further. In terms of the planning department, we try to just think about those issues and be knowledgeable about the history of our profession and the impact and our policies, and try to bring in information and data where we can, and then also realize our limitations. And in this situation, we just felt like this is not a job the staff needs to do, and it's something that we could broaden within the community and have a more inclusive process around. So, you know, it varies, I would say, at this point. There isn't anything set, and hopefully, in the future, there will be.
Well, yeah, if you don't mind passing that message along to see if they're interested, and then maybe just let us know, because I'd love to even listen in on the conversation if they have it.
Will do, we'll be in touch.
I move that we adjourn.
Check it. All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned, 7:15 PM. Thank you, everybody.